Welcome, everybody, to this regular meeting of the South Kingstown Town Council. It is Monday, November 9th, and the time is 7:30 PM. The first order of business, as always, is to pledge allegiance to the flag. Please rise and join me.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands on a nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. And tonight, we have a few things to move around on the agenda. First, we're going to move forward a couple of resolutions. Forgive me, I don't know where. From page 16 and page 17, items 13B and C, to recognize a couple people. And then, I'm also going to move, under licenses, items 6, items A through I, to behind item 7B are public hearing liquor licenses. All right. So, oh, well, first, let's take the roll.
Council President Collins?
Here.
Council Vice President Haley?
Here.
Councilwoman Clough?
Here.
Councilwoman Glathill?
Here.
Councilman Bailey?
Here.
All members present.
Thank you. All right, so, item 13B is a proclamation, which reads, "Whereas Dr. Janice Prochaska has announced her resignation from the South Kingstown Recreation Commission after 23 years of service, having served as chairperson of the commission from 2001 through 2003, and whereas, under Dr. Prochaska's guidance and leadership, the Parks and Recreation Department has received national accreditation through the National Recreation and Parks Association, opened a nature center whose mission is to educate the community on the importance of guarding and protecting our natural resources, seen the development and expansion of the William C. O'Neil Bike Path, the town's first dog park, Green Hill Park, West Kingston Park, and Broad Rock and Curtis Corner Playfields, seen programs and special events expand to over 200 offerings annually, seen the formalization of the Friends of South Kingstown Parks and Recreation, a nonprofit 501(c)(3) organization that provides financial support to the department specifically for its scholarship program, and completed the design of a new community recreation center to be constructed within the next year. And whereas, since 2003, Dr. Prochaska has served on the NRPA Board of Trustees as a citizen member and co-chair of the Public Policy Committee, and whereas, as a member of the Friends of South Kingstown Parks and Recreation Association since 1999, Dr. Prochaska has been a tireless advocate for local youth involvement, supporting and contributing to the Friends Scholarship Fund, so that all South Kingstown children can enjoy and benefit from the many recreational opportunities the town offers. And whereas, Dr. Prochaska, an avid tennis player and lover of nature, has been a true messenger of South Kingstown Park and Recreation's mission to offer residents opportunities for healthy leisure activities by providing quality facilities, accessible natural resources, and enriching public programs, now therefore, we, the Town Council of the Town of South Kingstown, do hereby extend our congratulations and thanks to Dr. Janice Prochaska and recognize her for 23 years of dedication to improving the quality of life in South Kingstown through her stewardship as a member of the South Kingstown Recreation Commission."
It's been an honor to serve, and I've been very proud of the options that the Parks and Recreation Services has been offering to the community. I've been trying to stay here long enough that we can do the groundbreaking of the new gymnasium, and I'm so happy that it will be soon, I hope that it will be soon. And I also want to say that one of my favorite projects has been the skateboard park, and I'm so pleased now that the inline skating part is going to be opened up, and we'll have a larger environment for the youth that participate so actively in that activity. So, I just think that our Parks and Immigration have really helped people balance their lives in our community, and have given them many opportunities to enjoy being in this community with the community options. So, thank you so much for the honor.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Do we need a motion on that?
I make a motion that we affirm item B, I think, on the agenda, as presented by President Collins.
Second that.
So moved, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Thank you so much. Congratulations. Item 13C is another proclamation, and I will try to make my way through this, for Indu Surya Narayan. Whereas Indu Surya Narayan and her late husband ER have been longstanding participants at the South Kingstown Senior Center since 2003, they've taken part in many activities, including art history, knitting, health check clinic, and Make a Difference quilting group. And whereas, on October 20th, at the Senior Center's 15th anniversary celebration, Indu presented the Senior Center Director with a check in the amount of $10,000, and in a heartfelt address, she expressed her gratitude and support of the senior program, noting that she imagines that heaven would be much like the Senior Center, a place where all are welcome and can be independent to do as they wish, with support of friends and staff. Whereas she expressed her appreciation of the support that the Senior Center provided to her after the passing of her husband ER, in 2013, indicated that she has no specific wish for the expenditure of the funds, only that it be used to benefit the Senior Center in its mission to provide services and programs for the elderly in the community. Now therefore, we, the Town Council of the Town of South Kingstown, do hereby thank Indu Surya Narayan for the very generous donation, and wish her a happy, healthy future."
I just have a few words to say. Last time when I had to talk, you know, at the center, I wrote this down, but once I went to the podium, I got so excited, I didn't look at this. I don't want this to go to waste, so this is my second chance, so I thought I'd read it. I am Indu Surya Narayan, and I have been a resident of Kingston for more than 50 years. My husband taught math at URI for 42 years, and he passed away in 2013. I have just made a small donation to the center, a kind of present on its 15th birthday. I have enjoyed the center immensely. In fact, I think this whole place resembles the idea of heaven. You know, you just sit there sometimes at our age and think, they talk of hell, I know, because when we were kids, they told, in hell, they have a big fryer full of hot oil, and they throw you in, you know? That's hell, but heaven, I have wondered, what is really heaven, you know? And then, you come pointer after point, it looks so much like the center, you know? Whatever was at the center, it looked like something that could be in the heaven, you know? It's, in other words, it's an ideal place where I discovered myself in this new phase after my husband passed away. It was a new phase, and I discovered myself. I thought I had, I was lost, but it restored me, it gave me a balance, so that both my feet could, you know, stay on the ground and help me move forward and find happiness, you know? It has that capacity there. And there is so much sky, I had never seen so much sky as I saw in that center when I stood in front and looked up, you know? It's a very nice place, and I'll finish reading, otherwise, I may wait for a third chance to read. I have enjoyed the center immensely. In fact, I think this whole place resembles the idea of heaven, that most of us must have. If we don't have, we must have that, you know? Make sure. Good vibes, neat surroundings, and above all, to be who we want to be. We come in and do nothing. You can just sit there, you know? Whereas, if you dress up and go somewhere, it's the office, you have to work. Here, you don't do anything, you just sit there, and if you feel like talking to someone, you talk, otherwise, you don't talk, you know? You have a cup of coffee, sit there, and sit around, and that is simple freedom, simple enjoyment, simple things, you know? That's the best. And at our age, I think, that is the best, there is nothing else. And that is a simple way of spending a day, and I have discovered that so, you know, for me at least, it works that way, and I've made new friends, and I have, I'm just learning to enjoy life on a whole different level, you know? So, that's why I wanted to say thank you to the center, a simple way of saying thank you. Thank you all, yeah.
Thank you. Indu, Indu.
Indu.
We have a.
Thank you.
Thank you. And thank you, Karen. Scott is in the audience, and also, Karen, Ryan, I'm sorry, do a great job there at the Senior Center, so thank you very much. And that brings us to item 2, our agenda, which, or item 4, I'm sorry, the approval of minutes of previous meetings.
I make a motion that we approve item number 4, A, B, and C, from our previous last meeting.
Second that.
So moved, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
That motion carries unanimously. Item 5 is our consent agenda.
I make a motion that we approve the items included here tonight in the consent agenda.
Second.
So moved, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
That motion carries unanimously. And since we've moved the licenses back, we will go to item 7 on the agenda, public hearings. And the first is a public hearing relative to an application for renewal of an indoor shooting range license in accordance with the South Kingstown Town Code, Chapter 9, Licenses and Miscellaneous Business Regulation, Article 6, Indoor Shooting Ranges. Term of license renewal transfer, Mark Faye is here to tell us more about it.
Yes, I was only here on behalf of the indoor gun range a few months ago, I don't think it was that long, when I work with Mr. Rosillo.
Hold on one second. Mike, do you want to?
No, would you say?
Okay. This public hearing is open now.
Okay. Again, we were here only a few months ago, once we, working with the town, the officials and Mike Rosillo to prepare that licensing ordinance, we got one under our belt, so to speak, only a few months ago, just to make sure we had the process down. Now, because it's an annual renewal, we're up again for 2016, so the renewal application, which is essentially the same as the initial application, has been submitted to the council, contains all the same information that was in the first application, and so, at this time, we're seeking just for a renewal of the license.
Thank you. Anything to add? Any questions from the council? Great. I think we need a motion to close the public hearing. Any comments from the public?
I make a motion to close the public hearing.
Second.
So moved. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Now I would entertain.
Motion to approve renewal of the license.
Second.
So moved. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
And the motion carries unanimously. Congratulations.
Yeah, thank you, ladies and gentlemen.
Item 7B is a public, I open the public hearing for item 7B, a public hearing relative to the renewal of liquor licenses for the year beginning December 1st, 2015. Said licenses are granted contingent upon issuance of a certificate of good standing from the Rhode Island Division of Taxation, compliance with all town ordinances and regulations, the payment of any municipal taxes and user fees and arrears to the town, and the correction of any fire code violations. Applications for licenses to sell intoxicating beverages under the provision of Title III of the General Laws of 1956, as amended, have been filed as follows. For Class A retailers, we have Jaber's Liquors, Patsy's Package Store, Sweeney's Package Store, and Wakefield Liquors. Is there anybody present to speak to these businesses, license? Under Class B Victular, we have 333 Main Street LLC, doing business as Fat Bellies Irish Pub, 629 Succotash LLC, doing business as Matunik Oyster Bar, Apple New England LLC, doing business at Applebee's Neighborhood Grill and Bar, Bobby G's Inc., doing business as Bobby G's Pub, Captain Jack's, doing business as Captain Jack's Restaurant, Chen's Restaurant, David Barnes Development Inc., doing business as The Muse Tavern, DPTA Holdings II LLC, doing business as Dragon Palace of Wakefield, Hanson's Pub LLC, doing business as Two Ten Oyster Barn Grill, Hang D LLC, doing business as Tong D Restaurant, K&amp;Z Bistro LLC, doing business as Kabuki Restaurant and Lounge, Laurel Food and Beverage Inc., doing business as Laurel Lane Country Club, Oceanfront Lounge Inc., doing business as Ocean Mist, Old Mountain Lanes Inc., doing business as Old Mountain Lanes, Pegasus Pizza Incorporated, doing business as Estia Restaurant and Bar, Phil's Kitchen, doing business as Phil's Restaurant, Roadie Joe's LLC, Roba Rustica LLC, doing business as Pizzeria Mezzo, Rosehill Golf Club Incorporated, Shogun Steak and Seafood House II Incorporated, Surfside Thai Food LLC, doing business as Satang Restaurant, SWT LLC, doing business as Saltwater Tavern, The Tipperary Tavern LLC, doing business as Tara Mulroy's Joyce Family Pub, Tops Inc., doing business as Chop House Grill, and Tori II Corp., doing business as Trattoria Romana South. Anyone here to speak to those businesses? All right. Class B Tavern licenses, Pimp Filios Inc., doing business as Bistro by the Sea, South Kingstown Hotel Associates LLC, doing business as Holiday Inn, South Kingstown. Anyone here to speak to those business? Class B Hotel, we have South Kingstown Hotel Associates LLC, doing business as Holiday Inn, South Kingstown. I'm assuming they're not here for that one either. Class B Limited, Burn Enterprises, doing business as DB's Pizza, JSR Corp., doing business as Tony's Pizza Palace, VGB LLC, doing business as Pasquale's, Pizzeria Napolitana. And I don't see anybody here to speak to those businesses. Class D, Club Full Privilege, The Elks Club of South Kingstown, number 1899. Anybody here to speak to the Elks? No. And Class T, Legitimate Theater, South County Center for the Arts, doing business as Courthouse Center for the Arts. And that is the full list of licenses. Any comments from the council? I would entertain a motion to close the public hearing.
I make a motion to close the public hearing.
Second, eh?
So moved, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
And that motion carries unanimously. We need somebody to make a motion to approve this, but there's specific language that we need to read.
Yeah, can you just read what's in paragraph 7B, approve public hearing item 7B, and then stop reading where said license is approved.
I make a motion to approve item number 7B, a public hearing relative to the renewal of liquor licenses for the year beginning December 1, 2015. Said licenses are granted contingent upon the issuance of a certificate of good standing from the Rhode Island Division of Taxation, compliance with all town ordinances and regulations, the payment of any municipal taxes and user fees and arrears to the town, and the correction of any fire code violations. That would pertain to Class A, Class B, Class, excuse me, Class B Tavern, Class B Hotel, Class B Limited, Class D, and Class T.
Second that.
So moved. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
And that motion carries unanimously. Congratulations to.
All of you.
That brings us to the items that I had moved here from licenses, items A through I. I would entertain a motion to take them all together and approve. If we go back to item 6, so page 2.
I make a motion that we accept them as a block, A through I.
Right, approving all of the licenses as presented this evening in items 6A through I.
Second that.
All right, any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
And that motion carries unanimously as well. Lots of page flipping tonight, sorry for that. Page 15, oh.
14.
14.
Communications, we have none tonight. So, item 9 is comments from interested citizens. This is the opportunity where the public can come up to the podium, tell us what you're thinking, what we could be doing better. Is there anybody in the audience who wants to speak? Any comments from council members today?
I would just like to remind everyone of the Veterans Day Parade this Wednesday. It starts at 10 o'clock. It runs from Camden's down Main Street, up High Street, and ends at Wakefield School, and there's always a service right there at the memorial in the field. There's also a breakfast, Veterans Day breakfast, held at Camden's between 7 and 10. That's put on by the auxiliary post 916 for the VFW here, so there's lots going on in town this Wednesday. I hope everybody can make it out to be there. Also, I would just like to acknowledge, we have a happy birthday going out to Vin Murray, who just turned 60 last week, so if you see Vin, make sure to wish him a happy birthday.
Happy birthday, Vin.
I just want to say, I saw that the Johnny Cake Center has been soliciting donations for Thanksgiving and Christmas coming up. They do, not only do they provide for citizens during the holidays, but also during school vacations for families that don't have access to free lunch. So, I saw them soliciting some donations, looking for some volunteers to help, if anybody out there has some time to either go on the website, or call the Johnny Cake Center right in Peasdale, and they'll be happy to put you to work.
Great. And Steve, will you talk about the Solarize program in your manager's report?
We're moving forward with the program at this time. What we would like to see, there's going to be some publicity, and what we're looking at is the potential for probably 50 to 75 homes that would participate in the program. We would assume that the overall cost of the arrays on a per-unit basis would be around $30,000. We also assume that, based on the discounting that would come by a purchase of all of the units by one vendor, that we could see discounts up to 20%. Also, with some of the tax incentives that were there, the potential is that the actual out-of-pocket cost could be somewhere in the 50 to 60% range associated with that. At this point, we're asking people to get the information from us, then decide whether they want to pursue it. If they want to pursue it, we'll have them talk with the company. Once they talk with the company, the company will come out and actually do an inspection of the property, and tell them what type of arrays are possible, and what the potential buyback would be for that type of a system. If the people are then serious at that point, they'll do an actual plan, and then, there'll be a contract that would be signed. Hopefully, what this will do is to be able to provide, really, a resource information, so that people won't be questioning, is it a viable option, but rather, we'll be able to make an informed decision. And with that informed decision, because there'll be a mass purchase, there'll be considerable savings. So, we're looking forward to the program. We think we've got a good vendor in place to be able to move the advertising and the education component forward first.
Yeah. I was really just getting at, making an announcement that, I think it's November 17th, we have a meeting right here in these chambers, so people can come, 19th. Thank you, Vin. November 19th, for everybody watching, so please come and get informed, it's a great program. And that brings us to the Town Manager's Report.
I was going to report on the Solarize.
Oh, you were.
I yield to the swister, unless you've got questions.
Again, unless you have questions.
I think we're okay. That brings us to appointments. I think we do have an appointment to make tonight.
I make a motion on item 12A, a resolution appointing Nicholas, oh, gosh, Gavostev, Gavostev, to the Library Board Committee for a term that expires, I don't have that in front of me. I don't know when that term expires. Look that up, but.
Yes, July of 2018.
July 2018. So, I make a motion to approve item 12A for Nicholas Gavostev.
I second that.
So moved. Any comments?
I just want to say, we had several excellent candidates for that. It's great to see the interest in serving our community with, through the library. It's great. I hope they stay active.
Yeah, we interviewed so many good candidates for this position, so there was really no bad choice, but congratulations to him.
You have a motion as second, right?
Yep.
Okay. And we, did we vote? No. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Good. That carries unanimously as well. Item 13 is new business. 13A is a resolution affirming a proclamation presented November 1st, 2015, to Daniel Kelly for attaining the rank of Eagle Scout. We were hoping that he would join us tonight. Should we postpone it for him to come another night, or?
Yeah, he was invited, Meg and I were able to attend, and I thought they were going to be here, but.
I did invite them. We gave the proclamation.
So, maybe they just couldn't come.
Can just pass it, I suppose.
I would just say, we can defer to him, and if he wants to show up on another date, then, you know, we can allow him to accompany us with a pledge.
Why don't we pass it, and we can invite him to lead us in the pledge of future name.
Okay.
I make a motion to, I'm on the right page now. I make a motion to approve the proclamation under 13A for Daniel Kelly, and if he wishes to participate in leading in the pledge in the future, we would welcome the invitation to have him be here.
I second that.
So moved.
It was certainly a great ceremony, and the work he did on the paths was impressive, so I sure hope he can make it and take his moment.
Great. All right, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
And that motion carries unanimously. And that will bring us to, if I'm correct, 13H. A resolution amending the town's liquor license rules and regulations. Section 1, the current number of licenses for each class shall be authorized as indicated below, unless changed by a. unless changed by a majority vote of the Town Council. Did you want to tell us a little bit about this, Steve?
Based on the licenses that you approved for issuance on December 1st, two amendments would be necessary. Under the B Vichular license, the number 26 is reduced to 25, and under the D Club Full Privilege, would be reduced from 2 to 1. By amending the regulation in that manner, there will be no licenses available other than at the council's prerogative to be able to increase the number going forward.
Thank you.
I'll make a motion to approve agenda item H, reducing Class B Vichular from 26 to 25, and Class D Club Full Privilege from 2 to 1.
Second.
So moved. Any discussion on this item? All right. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
And that motion carries unanimously. And it also brings us to the end of our agenda tonight. And I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
I make a motion to adjourn.
Second.
So moved. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? And by a vote of four to one, the motion carries.